Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and her God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we are going to begin today's meeting by taking up item number one. Item number one is to present a proclamation recognizing October 2013 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County. Supervisor Ashida, he's actually is Italian, don't let his appearance fool you.
Nick here. Come forward, please. Join me over here. On behalf of the board, I'd like to present you this proclamation recognizing October 2013 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County. You know, it's hard to believe five centuries ago Christopher Columbus came to North America. And unfortunately, I'm getting close to that 100 years that I learned, you know, when you learn about it in grammar school, which I'm not even sure they teach you anymore. But it's been a long history of Italian Americans that have helped shaped our society and steer the course of our history. Whereas the Sons of Italy, Enrico Caruso Lodge was instituted in June 2000, excuse me, 1927. It's founded on the principles of liberty, equality, and fraternity. When a lot of people came to this country from different parts, they always grouped together and usually, surprisingly, they came from the same region. And it was a, it was a social outlet and also gave them strength to deal with the issues with the new country. So now be resolved Tulare County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes October 2013 as Italian Heritage Month in Tulare County and encourages Tulare County residents to learn more about the history of Italian Americans. And with that, I'd like make this, present you with this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
And photograph. And Nick, would you like to say a couple words?
Like Ashida, Mr. Ashida said, you know, from Christopher Columbus until today, we've had a tremendous influence of, influx of Italians in this country. They've contributed a lot to the, to the United States of America. In fact, in the audience, there's two immigrants from Italy, Frank Parisi and, and can't think of his name now.
Is it Louisi?
Yeah, Louisi. And then there's a lot of first generation like myself, my parents came from Italy, in fact, from the same town, Putiano, which is a sister city of Visalia, because there's over a hundred immigrants from Putiano, which is a town of 25,000 into Tulare County. And one of the oldest living couples of immigrant, first generation is Ida and Lawrence Romanazi, which are over 90 years old and what, 63 years of marriage?
Nine, 69.
69 years. And so it's an honor for me to receive this proclamation and for the Sons of Italy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And actually, you know, I don't know why I didn't present that proclamation, I actually have a little bit of Italian in me. My godmother's actually in Italy right now, but you had the full blooded Italian make the presentation, so again, my apologies. All right, next, we're going to move on to item number two on the presentation, I'm sorry, on the agenda today. It's a presentation given by United Way regarding the 211 referral line program. Jeremy? It's all you.
Thank you for having me here today to talk to you about the 211 information and referral line here in Tulare County. For those of you that don't know what 211 is, it's an information and referral line that connects people to resources throughout our county. And today, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our highlights from last year and give you some data that we collected from our clients that we serve. So last year, we distributed over 115,000 pieces of material to every school in Tulare County, and we did that by bookmarks. So hopefully, we encourage kids to read, but also inform them about the services that 211 offers. And we also hired, with the help of HHSA Mental Health, Tulare Works, and First Five of Tulare County, we were able to hire full-time, a full-time resource specialist and an outreach specialist. And what this has allowed us to do is to actually be a little more thorough on updating our resources and getting public awareness of what 211 can offer, not only to the public, but also to providers. And by providers, I mean the people we have in our database on the services that we can offer, not only to them, but to their clients. When I first started here with United Way as their 211 director, I noticed that the website that we offered was not as user-friendly as I would like to have seen it. So I updated it and I developed a new graphical interface that allowed easier access for our clients to utilize 211. And it's just a picture, we're always updating and figuring out ways to make it easier for people to access resources, because that's the whole goal behind 211, is to connect people to resources without any hassle, no wrong door taken, just, you know, give them the number, they can call and they can get connected. And then also, if you want to check out our website, we have 211tularecounty.org, that's the website that I'm working on. And then through our state network, 211 California, we developed a 211 iPhone app, so all of you can download it on your smartphones and check out the new app. We also have included our covered California in the database, as you all know, I'm sure that today is the opening enrollment for the new Affordable Care Act, and we have included that in our database to help connect people to that insurance. And then we've also increased our outreach activities. Through our outreach specialists, we've been able to go out to over 50 outreach events last year, as well as presentations, and we've gone to health fairs, step-up events, farmers markets, and swap meets have actually been really, really successful with reaching different demographics. We've also served, so last year, we served over 10,000 individuals. And then the satisfaction data is something that I really enjoy, and that's when a client calls, we ask them a series of questions, including demographics, but also how satisfied they are with the services that they're receiving. So last year, 99% of callers requested, or who called, said that they would recommend 211. 83% said that they, the information was provided was accurate, and we'd like to increase that, hopefully with this resource specialist, we're going to be able to increase that number to the 90s. And then 97% received referrals that fit their needs. Sometimes our resource specialists, when they call, have to do a little bit of case management, they have to find out what their needs are and then try and read between the lines sometimes. This was our call volume for last year. You can see a surprising trend is that August and September is, is actually our highest call volume, and I believe that's, and you'll notice on the next slides, that's because of the air conditioning, electric use. That's one of our biggest resources. This is the top 10 caller needs, our electric service payments and rent payment assistance is our two biggest needs that we receive as far as calls. And it's kind of difficult sometimes because we have to find the resource and then see if there's enough grant funding to be able to support these, the number of calls we're receiving. And that leads into this, which is the number of resources in our database for the number of resources that we receive. So you can see we have an abundance of food pantries, but we have very little in terms of electric service payment assistance and rent payment assistance, which is our biggest number that we receive. And that, those numbers are actually the ones that are active throughout different parts of the year. So during December, this coming winter, there might not be grant funding to support the rent payment assistance or electric funds, we have to just keep calling and searching for new resources. This is a never-ending battle to find resources. And then this is our errors problem needs comparison, and what all of you have, all the supervisors have in front of you is a breakdown by district, which is what, what I kind of show here in terms of our errors needs, which errors is Alliance of Information and Referral Services, which is a way for us to categorize our taxonomies and to align all of our resources throughout California, throughout the United States, is all of them should be the same. So if you go to Los Angeles, the taxonomy is going to be identical to the one utilized here in Tulare County. And as you can see, again, housing and utilities is the biggest need, second only to food and meals. I want to say thank you to the Health and Human Services Agency, Mental Health Services, Tulare Works, Tulare County Board of Supervisors, thank you again for having me here, First Five of Tulare County, our 211 network, and our service providers that allowed us to put their information into our database. If the supervisors have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from my colleagues or comments? Supervisor Wardley?
Thanks for the presentation. I was looking at the age demographics of callers, and I, I know, this is looking at District Four, and it shows like adults, it says 26 to 59, but then it has a separate category, 18 to 29, so I'm curious about how that was.
So when I, when I came in, we, we went from a different database, and we went from Refer, which is another kind of software, to iCarroll, and we had different ways to lay out the data. When we, when we merged with, or started, we got a grant from HHSA Mental Health, they go by, I think, A, which is teens, adults, and youth. So that's the breakdown, I kind of had to make the transition to this new breakdown system, so that's why it has the overlap.
Okay.
Because next year, we've straightened it out, it'll be a lot here to read.
I guess just a comment, looking at this, what's surprising to me is the small percentage of seniors.
Yeah.
It was primarily people who were 59 years and younger, I don't consider 59 as seniors, but I mean, as a senior, it was only a very small percentage.
Yeah, we're, we're always trying to identify gaps in our services, and one of those is definitely older adults, well as veteran services, and that's something we definitely lack in terms of services that we have in our database, and we're always looking for new providers to get in there. And I encourage all of you, if there's a gap in service that you identify and you see a need for, let us know, and we will try to identify that and include it, because we want to get as many resources in here as possible.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just make a comment, you know, I'm really glad that you brought this presentation, I know we met earlier this year to talk about this, and I sure appreciate the outreach you've made to me to show me what's going on in District Two and in Tulare County. I think this presentation's very informational, and you're right, it really is about getting resources out there to the community. And when people do have questions and they don't have a pen or paper to write down on the long list of all the different providers and, you know, Health and Human Services entities, hey, it's real simple, just call 211 and you will get connected. And I think that's a, that's a very simple thing that people can grab onto and utilize, and they definitely are doing so. I'm sure that call volumes will continue to increase, and I appreciate all your efforts and appreciate the new director's efforts. Rosemary, you're doing a great job, and please do utilize this board and all of Tulare County if we can help get this out in the community even more. Supervisor Ashida?
I was surprised, housing and utilities, by far, in each district was the number one generator of calls.
Very surprising. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, have a great day, thanks. All right, the next item we're going to move on to this morning is item number three, that is the public comment period. This time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comments can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under the public comment period? Sure, go, and you can use either microphone, that would be fine. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you. I'm out of Porterville, and my name is John Duran. The reason I'm here is because on June of 2012, I filed a complaint with a county grand jury for an investigation request, reference to the city of Porterville, and some questionable practices that were very much concerning to me. They went ahead and conducted a one-year investigation, and it led me to believe that they made recommendations to the district attorney of the county. I have not heard from the district attorney, even though I've sent two requests for documentation under the Public Records Act. And I've also written to you people, and I have not received any information or comments or, or a return for my concerns. So I'm here publicly letting you know that it's very important that the board look into the matter. If you need the information, and only because I'm not allowed to speak on it in depth, but to contact the grand jury or the district attorney and find out exactly what the status is in reference to the allegations that were made. And I think it's very important because of the public taxpayers, because of taxpayers and because of the voters that elect you to, to serve as servants for the public, especially Mr. Ennis, you know, being from the Porterville area, you've got jurisdiction over, over the city. And I would appreciate, I would appreciate if the board, especially Mr. Ennis, would get back to me. I'm sure if you checked with the secretary, she would have my phone number. Any questions that you may have, I'll be glad to answer. Again, it's very important that the board look into it, and only because I like to keep it within the county before I start seeking other legal advice outside the county. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, do you want to make a comment?
Just a few. I'd ask, is there a board representative? If Mr. Duran would meet up with Ms. Pierce and give her information regarding the Public Records Act aspects, those requests, we'll certainly check into that and make sure that he gets responses. The grand jury is an arm of the court, not of the county, and of course, the district's attorney is an independent elected official. I have no idea if there is or is not a criminal investigation, but if there is, those documents would be exempt from disclosure under the Public Records Act unless and until charges were filed, and even after that, a great deal of their records would be exempt. So we will try to make sure that Mr. Duran gets a response to whatever public records acts he may have made, requests he may have made, and we'll deem this one today as, as one also.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. All right, are there any other public comments this morning? Sure, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record, name and address.
If you don't recognize me this morning, I lost my glasses and I'm wearing my park kit, those guys. But I'm here to address the board on the matter of the crossing of Deer Creek at Road 224.
Please state your name and address, sir.
Anonymous, Terabella, California. So I just, I'm, in light of everything that I've learned about the way the county works, I've, I brought a petition asking your support. I already emailed the chairman of the board, whoever that was. But if you'd like to look over this petition, or, I'm still, I'm still, I'm still collecting signatures. I had one clipboard that's lost, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't advertise for it because it cost $18.82 for a lost and found ad in the paper, so I'll find it somewhere along. I got probably three times that number of signatures, but at least you can understand that there are a lot of people who are interested in seeing this thing. Reached some kind of a culmination prior to the installation of the new bridge, quote, "which has been in the works for like five years, four or five years, and we're still trying to get across that river." I saw, I said, "You want to sign the petition?" He said, "No, you guys get a boat, get a boat and go across the river." That's all I have for today.
All right, thank you, sir, and we'll even, we'll even let you keep your clipboard, but I have passed your information on to the road department.
You have this last in school district.
Oh, okay, all right.
Have to return it.
All right, thank you, have a great day. All right, are there any other public comments this morning? From a non-anonymous person?
Sure, sir.
Please do come forward. State your name and address for the record as well.
Good morning, my name's Timothy Hamilton from Exeter, and I wanted to address the board this morning on a issue that's been plaguing me for almost 20 years now. I've been diagnosed with PTSD, post-traumatic stress disorder, and I've sent letters repeatedly to the board requesting their assistance in this matter. I am a 20-year-plus veteran of law enforcement in Tulare County. Due to a conflict between a former captain and my father, my career was cut short after two attempts were made on my life. While working undercover, I was given instructions by a sergeant to change from a regular tactic which put the lives of my fellow deputies, as well as my own's life, in danger. After being forced back to Patrol Division, I was given a direct order from a captain to remove a crate of decomposed dynamite that turned into nitroglycerin, which was leaking through my uniform shirt from a red deck north of the city of Icelia. When asked by me, "Why doesn't the bomb disposal unit technician take care of this?", the response was, "He was busy." I've appealed to the sheriff's office, the DA's office, and county council, individual members of the Board of Supervisors, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, State Sheriff's Association, POST, and the California Attorney General's Office. So far, I've received no answers from these organizations, can only pray that they are conducting their own inquiries. The only satisfaction I have met with is that six deputies, including administrative personnel, have left the sheriff's office. I've been diagnosed with PTSD and have finished my memoirs, and I'm eagerly searching for an author to explain the truth in this matter. Also, no case number was ever assigned to my issue, which indicates you have taken any action as of yet. These incidents can only be described as murder attempts, and I am now disabled for life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe there are members of the sheriff's department here that you can speak with. Thank you. All right, are there any other public comments this morning? Hey, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it to the Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today with Supervisor Michael J. Ennis.
Michael J., that's one of the P's. Get that thing right, for the record, anyway, for the record, somebody might be listening. Well, this afternoon, we're going to go up and tour a mountain home, which I'm looking forward to, I haven't been up there in a long time, and looking forward to seeing some forests that are managed correctly, and we could be a shining star in Tulare County as a ballpark, so that's going to be great. Tomorrow, we'll be having another mini-game, mini-gang summit meeting at the Porterville Police Department. And then Saturday night is the big Sierra View District Hospital Gala, Dancing with the Stars, so I'll be out there. I'm not going to be dancing, but I will be there, so that's all I have.
All right, Supervisor Ashida?
Last week, Supervisor Ennis, myself, and CEO Jean Rousseau attended the Rural County Representatives of California Annual Meeting, and this group is a group of supervisors that represent 33 counties in the state of California. And the reason we're members of this organization is that mostly, these are mountain counties, very rural, and we have a lot in common with, with that group. And we find that they're very active in protecting our rights in Sacramento. So we had a very successful conference, it was very enjoyable, very informative, and look forward to the next one. That's all I have.
All right, Supervisor Wardley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, we had a meeting at the Alt Irrigation District with the state folks and local people regarding the regional water project that Alt is moving forward with. It's quite a complicated thing because it's tied into the Yetdom-Seville Water Project. We discussed the Munson Project, which is something we have on our agenda this morning. And I, I was a good meeting because there were a lot of people at the table and issues that were raised and being addressed to find resolution. So these, these projects are moving forward, it's very exciting, the regional project is kind of one of a kind. The proposal has been one that was promoted by the Alt Irrigation District. Because of other projects, they've been able to actually secure water rights adequately so that they can put a regional water system in that will treat surface waters for potable water supply purposes that hopefully will reach out Cutler-Rosi all the way out to Seville, Yetdom, Sultana, Munson, so a large swath of the northern part of the county where we have a lot of disadvantaged communities and drinking water problems. So it was a very good meeting. I, I too, am very excited about going to the demonstration forest this afternoon up in our county. I believe it's one of those kind of unknowns that many people are not aware of in Tulare County, just as not aware of Bosch Park, our county park where we will also be going. We're the only county in the world that has the giant sequoias like we have in our, in our park. And I, and I think of the demonstration forest as being a vaccinated forest. We need to vaccinate our forest up and down this here Nevada, so we can avoid the catastrophic fires that have occurred, such as the Rim Fire up near Yosemite. And so I'm looking forward to seeing and, and hopefully, hopefully we'll have a good number of people from the press there to promote what's happening there, which is, as Mr. Ennis indicated, is proper forest management. And when you have proper forest management, you have more water, you have more wildlife, you have more recreation, you have timber, you have employment, and you can almost get utopian about it. But there's a lot that can be done in our forest to restore them to what they need to be and, and avoid the kind of catastrophic fires, as I said. The last I heard, the Rim Fire was up over $150 million of suppression costs, and it's anticipated there'll be another $200 million of expenses in dealing with the aftermath of that fire in terms of erosion control and different things that would be needed. So we're talking about a huge amount of money, then, so we've taken an asset, a national forest or, or parkland, and turned it into a liability. And so we need to turn that ship around. Saturday, we had a very successful raising day in Dinuba, well, well-attended, and as far as I know, very quiet and a family-friendly event, and I'm not aware of any problems. And so I think that's about all I have to say today. The one thing is, I did want to let the board know that I am scheduled, as of now, next week to be in Washington DC with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control Board, folks, but in light of the government shutdown, I'm not sure if that trip will still be going forward, or at what point they'll decide to pull the plug. But anyway, as of now, I will be gone next, for next week.
Supervisor Ennis, like another bite at this apple?
I forgot to, to comment on one thing that it's been kind of a thing between Steve and I for the last few years. Porterville High School, Porterville High School, the big orange and green, meet Dinuba Friday night by two touchdowners. And my nephew, Austin Hefner, was voted the most valuable player of the game, so.
He had a great game, it was, it was a very exciting game, a very, very good game.
All right, thanks for the weekly high school sport update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now I'm going to move on, got a few things I want to go over that are happening in District Two. First of all, today, they're having a resource fair called the Roadmap to Resources at the Tulare Senior Center. That takes place from 6:00 to 8:00 PM this evening. That is located at 201 North F Street, and it's a resource fair for seniors to learn about caregiver assistance, Alzheimer's support, Medicare 101, housing assistance, et cetera. I think it's a great event, and I encourage all the seniors to attend, maybe some of my colleagues might be interested as well. Also covering this week, Big Creek, the Edison Project up in Fresno County is having their Centennial Event this Thursday. At 10:30, they will have a ceremony, and I've been asked to attend and present a proclamation on behalf of the board, and I'll be glad to do so. Saturday, Grandma's House, a local organization in Tulare that does a lot for youth, is having their fundraiser, an annual fundraiser event. That is at 6:00 PM at the Heritage Complex in Tulare. Hope that it's a very well-attended event, and they raise lots of funds because they do a lot of really great work. Also, on Monday, there's going to be an American, I think it's A, American Institute of Planning, not sure about the acronym, but it's a group of planners, an association of planners, that are having their association conference actually here in Tulare County. Going to bring a lot of folks into the area and a lot of revenue to our local economy. Hope it's a very successful event for all those planners. And lastly, the South County Justice Center will be having a dedication on Monday in Porterville at 11:00 AM. That should be another great event, and it'll be nice to see that complex open and hopefully fully funded for full operation. That concludes my Board of Supervisors comments, and I will go ahead and move on now to the consent calendar. Are there any items that any member of the board or member of the public would like to have pulled from the consent calendar for separate consideration?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Michael T. Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero. With Supervisor Cox not voting because he is not in attendance at today's meeting, consent calendar passes unanimously. We are now going to move on to item number fifteen on our agenda. It's a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve an amendment with Tulare County Association of Governments to extend the term of agreements to provide transit services to the College of Sequoias. Mr. Bullis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Matthew Bullis, RMA Engineering. I have before you today is a Fifth Amendment to Agreement number twenty-four eight seventeen with Tulare County Association of Government for the College of Sequoias Student Transportation Services. This is a program developed by TCAG. It's announced growth of the Unmet Transit Needs Hearing of two thousand and ten. At the hearings, there was a need for student passes for COS students. TCAG worked handily with the cities, the counties, COS personnel and affected individuals. And they developed a program where TCAG collects funds for distribution to transit providers to provide this service we're talking about. The program allows COS students unlimited rides on all fixed transit routes throughout the, the county, cities and county, and offers COS students a low-cost transportation alternative to driving. Program increases ridership, improves air quality and decreases congestion on campus parking lots. And it's funded by student transportation fees, COS Board of Trustee funds, Measure Our funds, federal and state transit funds and fare revenues. The student transportation fee to the students is a full-time student is five dollars per semester, four dollars for a part-time student. The COS Board of Trustees adds a forty percent, forty cents per student fee that goes into that program. Measure Our funds are collected through TCAG, twenty-five thousand for two separate semesters for a total of fifty thousand that goes into the program. And we also have the transit funds and fare revenues if, if we need to augment those programs. A little hard to read, I apologize. Looking at that, I wish it was a little clear, but in spring two thousand and, two thousand and one, right here, the number of riders in Tulare County that used the program was fourteen thousand one twenty-eight. And as it moves up to the spring two thousand and thirteen, which is over here, ridership is increased to twenty-two thousand eight twenty-three. Over the six semesters that's been in, in play, ninety-three thousand students have used the program and we have collected sixty-one thousand seven twenty-seven for our portion of the program. Looking at the, of course, we're not the only ones. The other cities also provide these services. Total ridership, which is, well, hard to get through. There it is. Total ridership on that corner is seven hundred and seventy-six thousand students have used this program. And next to it, fi- three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars were collected for this program. So you can see, we are a player, a part of this program that we're offering. But the other cities in the area also contribute to the program and also provide the same service. This agreement timeline, original agreement was before this board and approved December fourteenth, two thousand and ten, and it covered strictly the spring two thousand and one semester. We've had four additional amendments over the years. Those covered fall two thousand and eleven through summer two thousand and thirteen semester. This amendment will cover the fall two thousand and thirteen, current semester, spring and summer two thousand and fourteen's. And it will continue the program services we've had for the last three or four years. And the payment formula is in your agreement and is establishes and continues that same formula. So I'm here to answer any questions. And I also have Daniel Fox, our county transit manager that runs the program in the audience to answer anything technical in nature.
Questions from board members. Supervisor Worthley?
Matt, is there a reason why we don't do it for longer periods of time? Why we have to come back and do this so, every so often, so frequently?
We, this is the programs that's coming through, through TCAG. There has been some changes semester to semester. So it has basically been short-term contracts that keep coming back for amendment. This will be the last amendment TCAG is indicating. They'll climb up with a new agreement. But there has been some changes to the formulas over the years. Oh, good, Christine.
Hi. Can I answer that? My name's Christine Chavez. I'm with the, with TCAG. We haven't entered into a long-term agreement because we've been trying to establish what the baseline ridership has been. Looking at the trend so far, you've seen seven, over seven hundred thousand riders. We do anticipate after, I will say a few words after Matt's done, entering into a longer-term agreement. We've been trying to establish a base funding source. We've applied for grants through the Air District, through TCAG and so on. So that's the reason that we haven't entered into a long-term agreement.
May I suggest a, a primary funder to be the city of Isalia? That's just my thought. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I'll, I will open it up to questions or comments from members of the public. And since you're up here, Christine, you can go ahead with your comments, please.
Okay. I'm here on behalf of the Director of TCAG, Ted Smalley. He's out of town. And he wanted to express his thankfulness to the Board of Supervisors for being so supportive of the program. In regards to additional funding for the program, TCAG staff has been working directly with the city of Isalia and COS to determine a funding program or a funding solution. And we expect to have an outline of our funding plan at the November TCAG Board meeting. And you would be pleased to know that as of this morning, we talked to COS and they will be contributing an additional thirty cents this school year. And then in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, they'll be contributing additional forty, thirty, thirty cents so that it'll raise their contribution to a dollar per student. And in the spring, it's anticipated for the students to vote on a fee increase. So it would increase full-time students from five dollars to ten dollars and part-time students from four dollars to seven dollars a semester. So that would also increase the base fares. And we have a couple other grant sources that are, that are pending out there and TCAG's going to continue doing research to determine what the direct impacts are to transit expansion, which include anything from additional headways to additional services between the two campuses. And TCAG will be providing that, those updates to the TCAG Board as they become available. So we encourage the Board of Supervisors to take action and approve the item. Thank you for your support.
Great. Any other questions or comments from members of the public this morning? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for comment. Supervisor Michael Ennis.
It's a great program because many of these young people in these outlying areas have no ways of transportation to follow Sequoias. So this is very relevant to the whole area and keep these students getting their education and, and moving forward with their lives. So, great program. And I would, if there's no further comment.
I'm going to, I'll make a comment, but I'll definitely look to you first for that motion, Mr. Ennis. Thank you for your eagerness. I, I, I just want to say, this is a great program. And really, this is what the Unmet Needs Hearings are about, that TCAG holds, where it, all the public is invited to come and talk about needs that aren't met related to transit. And this program came directly out of one of those hearings, as you showed in your presentation. And now we've had over seven hundred thousand riders. I think it's pretty incredible that we've been able to meet that need. And, and you know, I know Christine mentioned that they're, are, they're looking at fee increases at COS. Ten dollars a semester, I mean, most students, it would probably cost them ten dollars just for one car trip from their home to the campus and back. So it's really very reasonable. And if you look at the number of students, I believe the last time it was surveyed, how many students would not be attending college if it wasn't for this program, I believe it was four hundred and thirty or around that number of students that would not have attended college if they did not have transportation available to them. So I think this is a fantastic thing that transit can provide members of the public so that they can, you know, pick themselves up and, and move forward in any career direction or education direction that they would like. So I'm fully supportive of this program and look forward to a longer-term agreement and a more permanent status of this program. So, Mr. Ennis, I will now look to you for that motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Ashida. Please vote. The vote passes four to zero with Supervisor Cox not in attendance.
Thank you very much.
At today's meeting. Thank you very much. We will now move on. And item number sixteen is a tour of the Mountain Home State Demonstration Forest. We will be adjourning to that trip, but we do have closed session needs, I believe, counsel?
We do. Mr. Chairman, you have items A through D on your board's closed session agenda. Item B will be continued one week. I think there will be an announcement. We expect there will be an announcement.
All right, that's great. Thank you for attending today's board meeting and everyone have a great week. Meeting is adjourned.
This is Gene Rousseau, county administrative officer, reporting at a closed session on item C to consider the public employee appointment, employment for the position of human resources director on a motion by Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. The board voted unanimously with Supervisor Cox absent to appoint Rhonda Shustrom as the human resources director for the HRD.